...of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Morning, everybody.
Morning.
We'll call a meeting to order for promotions of the agenda approval. Any changes, additions, or corrections?
I don't believe so, so I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as printed.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All's?
Aye.
Motion carries. The minutes from the, uh, shoot, I might have to make a change of the date stated.
Oh, yeah. Then either one of us cut.
But, uh...
October 12th.
Yes. So it would be the October 12th meeting. Let that change, uh, make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All's?
Aye.
Minutes are approved. So we have general public concern. Anyone running about generally publicly concerned? Um, if we can, then it's agreeable to give us a couple of minutes of time. We'd like to drop down to the first bottom item. This is discussion, possible approval of determination of 2080 law enforcement contract between the city of Humboldt and Humboldt County that would be effective at the end of this year. So, take a look at that.
Now, I, my understanding is the 2080 agreement allow either party to cancel out of this with 90 days' notice, is that right?
Yep, that's correct.
Okay.
What they are asking for is a little bit less than the 90 days, so it cuts off at the end of a calendar year rather than going into the new year.
Do you have any objection to that?
Absolutely not.
Okay.
I think that it, uh, we've bailed the city out three times before, however many it's been. I think that, uh, they want us to swap law enforcement either as you go countywide or their own, their own. We're not gonna bounce back and forth between them. That's my opinion on it.
I would agree.
So I'll make a motion to dissolve the 2080 agreement between the city of Humboldt and Humboldt County.
As of the 12th thirtieth? That's the thirtieth and thirty-first?
Thirty-first.
Thirty-first, yep.
All right.
Sandy seconded.
Sandy seconded.
What's the effective date then?
December 31st.
Well, 31.
12:31, 2020.
Okay. It is in, okay, it's not assumed at the end of the year.
No.
I just wanted to make sure also that...
I think, yeah, I think the reason was they were like, I don't know what they, yeah, they wanted it to end on the...
Yeah, you said something about 90 days.
It's a little less than 90 days, but...
Okay, but be that as it may, till the end of the year. Okay, that's my clarification. Any further discussion?
Well, I have, like, we, I'm really kind of torn because I'm a taxpayer in Humboldt and I'm also on this board and I know that what we pay, what Dean gets paid from the city at forty, roughly $40,000, it's gonna be a far cry from the $40,000 when they put a chief in the place, but that's, it is my concern because I pay taxes down there too, so it kind of burns me both sides, but that's their discretion there, that's what they wanna do, so move forward.
Any other discussion?
Well, you know, I've been doing for 12 and a half years, you know, and if this was supposed to be such a short-term thing, I would've thought, you know, everything would've been done within, you know, within five years after I started this, but hey, it's their choice, whatever they want.
Right. I'll follow too.
Any other discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All's? Motion carries.
Thank you, guys.
You bet these, thank you Dean.
You bet.
Let me know what you find out with Denise.
Yes, will do.
Okay. Uh, well, we have gotten past that and in all fairness to general public concerns, and Bruce, that Dean is sitting here, we have to drain each, uh, hopefully in a short hour. You're more than welcome to visit, we'll drain each, 'cause I'm assuming what you're here for involves draining. Is that fair? Okay, thank you. Ben, your honor.
The first item that I've got on the agenda is to approve plans and specifications for six projects. Um, the first is our BR project with the Iowa DOT, its bridge replacement with an eight-by-eight box covert southeast of shore down on Washington Avenue. It would be a half mile north of the Eagle Blacktop. Uh, and the other five projects are asphalt overlay projects, it's the mill and fill project for next construction season. It is the Claire Blacktop, uh, the three-mile Pioneer Loop is two projects, 'cause that two-mile stretch on the county line is, uh, shared with Webster County on cost. Uh, the north-south one-mile stretch will be farm-to-market money. Uh, we also have the drag strip and Gotch Park Road from Gotch Park Bridge north into town, uh, with a portion of that cost being covered by the town of Humboldt.
And on the drag strip road you're setting off just past the business out there?
Uh, it'll be between the business, just short of Johnson's driveway.
Driveway.
Yep.
Roger.
It's about, uh, 40 feet south of their driveway, I think. It's where the asphalt starts to crumble.
Okay.
Yeah, asphalt plan, or is it part of SEAL thing?
We're gonna do a, a two-inch asphalt overlay on the drag strip. Something hopefully a little bit more permanent. We went in, uh, oh, about a month and a half ago and, uh, cut into the road in various locations where we had constant crosswater problems and French drain.
You've already got those installed?
Yep, already got those installed.
So they'll set through the winter and...
They'll settle through the winter and then we'll put a two-inch overlay over the whole thing.
Okay. Do you need a individual on these, Peggy, or can we do them as a group?
Dr. Davis, how do you want it done?
It doesn't matter.
They're all stapled together.
Yep. They, they need all of them.
If they're all stapled together, I'll make a motion to approve the plans and specs for the core project.
Um, I'll, I'll second that, but I got one question to ask on the drag strip. Do you ever put a, a fabric under that?
I know counties...
I've read, I've read that in different magazines where they do fabric under sometimes.
Uh, where they, where I've seen it used would be like north of Vincent, they did that years ago, and what they ran into is when they just did that, this most recent overlay project, when they were grinding it up and trying to reincorporate it, the fabric started coming in in balls and it was getting stuck in machines.
Oh.
And they basically paid...
Good caution, more in the future.
Two guys with pitchforks pulling the fabric out before it went into the machine.
Oh.
It's, it's a temporary fix. What you use it for is basically a bond breaker so that you don't have the crack come up all the way through the surface.
Come through, okay.
Um, but the last, the last few overlay projects that we've had, we haven't had much for, uh, cracks resurfacing because we're using a higher percentage of, of crushed rock in our mixes.
All righty, just a question.
Yeah, and timing, I mean, not exact, but they, these would be done by...
We're shooting for a letting date of, uh, January 20th through the DOT, and then the DOT sets the letting date, uh, for paving project, they'll probably pick beginning of July, late start date. Um, for the box covert, they'll probably pick the beginning of, uh, September for the start date.
Okay.
Which is my guess.
The box, yeah.
Yep. Yeah, they set the letting date, and then if, obviously, if we've got an issue with it, we can ask them to change it.
Mm-hmm.
With any of these, the tighter the, the start date, the more expensive, the more...
Yeah, the more time you give them, the cheaper it gets usually.
Yes. Okay. Well, any other group first and a second on that?
Yep.
Any, uh, further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All's?
Aye.
Thank you, Sandy. Carrie, there you go, Ben.
I've got one set of plans for everybody to sign. Uh, second item that I've got on the agenda is to approve an application to work in the county right away for Mid-American. This is south of Bogue, just off the Blacktop, uh, south of the bridge where they're looking at putting up a, a new office building, and I believe there's a new hog facility going up right now. It's, uh, Joel Zeeman's new shop is what it's listed as.
Okay, if everything's all under where, I'll make a motion to approve the application of working right away for Mid-American on 1541 Iowa Avenue.
I'll second that. Any further discussion? All's in favor?
Right.
Aye.
Aye.
All's? Approved.
The third item on the agenda is the one that, uh, we had talked about in work session last week, to approve the sale and transfer of the Humboldt County property at the old Rutland location to Humboldt County Conservation. Uh, I've talked with John Beatty, I've sent him, uh, a legal description for the property, but I have not gotten a formal document from John back as far as, uh, something for us to sign, but we can formally approve it. Um, and, and I talked to Todd this morning, and I saw Todd here as well.
Okay.
Well, I'm gonna go out on record again, I had another phone call this weekend from another interested party, but they've been called numerous times in this building and I said, "Well, we're kind of gonna catch 22 where we, if we can transfer to someone in the county rather than..." Next year, Todd comes in and says, "I need to add on three bays onto my shop 'cause I'm short of space." They already have the building, it's ours, so that's kind of the reason why we're doing it that way. But they still wanted, couldn't let people know that they were interested in that shop, so, and I said I would make that comment, but I said the way it sounds is probably gonna be, go to the conservation.
No, I mean, secondary roads-wise, we would probably make more money if we put it up for auction like we have my ass with SEAL bids, but for Humboldt County as a whole, it would probably cost more, like you said, if we sold it and Todd needed to put three bays on it.
Right.
Yeah.
Uh, I do like the language that we talked about where if Conservation does decide to sell it down the road, we split the proceeds.
Yeah, so it comes back to secondary roads.
Right, because we're, I mean, obviously, we're given to them at a discounted rate.
Yep.
Everything we're got, the way to do them, I think we've been along so far, okay. I think that, like you said, if you make a good cost savings over what it would be if we added on to our shop, or like, so...
I agree. I, for the money for the challenge for this state by doing this, I think it's just a part move to transfer it over and have it go to the conservation.
So I'd make that motion? Do we need a motion on that, Peggy?
Yes.
I'll make that motion to transfer that from the secondary road to the Humboldt Conservation.
I'll second the motion.
All right, we have first and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All's? Carrie?
Can we use your stamp, Sandy, to get these forms filled out?
I can just operate that, how about that?
Okay, then you can get it out of my drawer, anybody can, Sam, sir.
The last item that I've got on the agenda is to accept with regret the resignation of Humboldt County employee Bob Boyer. Uh, Bob purchased a, a year-round house up by Okoboji, uh, about a year ago, and he's been, you know, traveling between here and Addison, spending his weekends up there, obviously, and then, uh, living down here during the week. Anyway, back in May, I think it was, I reached out to the county engineer there, and he said that they had an opening, or they were going to have an opening. I mentioned Bob and, yeah, anyway, Davidson County hired Bob.
Oh, it's a good move for him, man.
Good.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that'll be effective, uh, middle of next month, but, uh, we can get the process started, I guess, and, and get the transfer paperwork in order, if anybody wants to transfer from one shop to Bogue, uh, before we move on to the next step of hiring another employee.
So, question, are you, are you going to just go back to the list of candidates that we had from the last hire, or are you gonna re, uh, add, or what?
If, if the, uh, if the posting ends up being up in Bogue, if nobody transfers, we'll have to re-advertise if it's a new location, we'll probably have new applicants. Uh, if somebody transfers from, say, the Humboldt shop location and the opening ends up being in Humboldt, yeah, I could probably go back to our old list, since that was just last month.
Mm-hmm.
Um, they'll just have to see where the transfers fall.
See where we're in the, in the week?
Yes. Yeah. And then I'll probably reach out to Renee if it isn't the same and make sure that we're okay.
Do it now.
So by letting him go, does that give us first right for weekends at his new house in the lake? I mean, we gotta have something to get out of this deal, like fishing rights or...
Yeah.
Picnic table activity on the Fourth of July, or, I mean, something like that should be. Would you ask Bob if that carries any weight?
I'll ask him, yeah. I'll see if he's got a dock that we can use over the holidays.
Tell him there probably won't be more than 30 or 40 people as soon as this is over, we're all coming up.
You're gonna have to upgrade to a tri team or something for the fishing boat.
Exactly. Well, wishing the best, I guess.
Yeah. I've had some good opportunities for him to switch up there to...
Yeah, I mean, he was, he was an employee for us for 25 years and, um, Dickinson, Humboldt County is, is making out because it's right before wintertime and they're hiring a...
An experienced man.
Experienced man, so, uh, we'll be in training for a while.
Do we get a motion in that? I'll make a motion to accept his resignation or transfer with regret.
I'll second it. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All's? Peggy wants, usually wants a guy.
For the, yeah.
See it.
Yeah, thank you. There you go. All right, Ben, do you have anything else?
We've got State's Avenue open back up, we did that on Thursday, um, that's back open to traffic. We've been doing bridge repair, uh, up in Washington, north of, uh, Vernon School Road, doing that bridge repair work up there, um, encasing some piling in concrete, placing river rap.
I love that bridge, it's in pretty good shape. It is?
That one is, there's a, a bank failure on the north side that they've been trying to repair. We ended up renting, uh, Kurt May's little mini hoe to be able to be underneath the bridge and resetting the back wall. Um, we also did some work, uh, by Gary Keena's place repairing some bank failure in that bridge. Um, yeah, we, we've been, I guess, clipping off the list. And we did the, uh, Rutland Bridge last Friday.
Yeah.
So, get that all done?
Yes, good.
So, just backing up the truck a little bit, so we'll only have that one box for next year?
We've got one, we've got one DOT box for next year.
Truck's year.
My, my plan is we'll end up...
Couple more.
We'll end up doing a couple more.
Okay.
Um, and, and possibly some Humboldt County forces.
Okay.
For next year. But, yeah, these are all projects that we're dealing with right now.
All right.
All right.
I'm trying to mute myself and...
Oh, so Bruce had to call me back. Are you there, Sandy?
She's there.
All right.
I'm here.
So the one on State's Avenue, that doesn't have any rail, but it's just an open...
It'll be open now, uh, that was a 10-by-10 box covert on skew, so, yeah, it's now wide open, all of that gravel from the county line all the way out.
Cool. It looks nice, from a distance, I drove down there, but it looked very nice.
We need to get some grass seed calmed down on it, and it should be good.
Yeah.
Well, your moisture's here already, it's just in the white form.
Yeah. They, they say it's always good to have your grass seed snowed on, so...
Yep, that'll be good for the cheating, look under the bright side.
Yeah.
And it's not gonna last, as they say. Uh, well, I don't see Janet here, and she was gonna come, maybe she'll get her, it won't be before max. Um...
Hey, Peggy?
Yes?
My internet just came on, did you want me to do Zoom or just continue on call?
That's entirely up to you.
There's Janet.
Oh, Janet's here.
Oh, there you are, right on time.
I don't mind if you want to... Okay, you can just continue with this.
Okay.
All right. All right, well, we have Janet Murphy here, uh, assuming in this case, present, or representing Little Moore, and, uh, little discussion on the warning siren that is located in Pioneer, so you can just get everybody up to speed on what's going on with that.
The city of Little Moore has a siren that is quite old, it's on a rotten pole, and it has to come down, and it could go back up, but I know that the city of Pioneer has one that's been wired incorrectly, and I think it's still functional, and they're not using it, and wondering if the city of Little Moore could have it.
And put it on a different pole, I'm assuming.
They would put it on a different pole in Little Moore, abandon the one that they have, they would just take that down altogether and put another pole across the street and use that. It, it was probably a free one, I assume, that at one time there was a program where they got free sirens, and it, they, Little Pioneer had problems with it continually, I'm not gonna say, I don't think it was the siren, I think it was the wiring, I think it was the fact that Ivan thought it should be wired this way, and somebody else thought it should be wired that way, and, and that's what happened.
So what if it doesn't work? The one in Pioneer doesn't work, are you gonna have, have to redo or repurchase a new one then for Little Moore?
The next time I get in the Pioneer one, it says it's all set up for Humboldt County and has all, everything up there, it would cost the city, a new one, just the siren itself, is close to $6,000. And then you have to get whatever they need on it, which this one would have it, and it's just sitting there. I talked to Joanne, and she said, "Well, I'm not doing us any good." Actually, the city of Pioneer bought everybody in the town, pulled out their radio on high because the siren didn't work.
I'd say, "Go for it." I have a question, do, we need to take action on that, is there any other than...
Technically, our siren right now, because we use...
Is it fully unincorporated?
Yeah.
Or are we still in the 90-day waiting period?
We're in the six-month waiting period.
Oh, six-month waiting period.
Oh, so we're not really...
It is the county.
Yeah.
As I'm asking, the, the city is no longer having meetings, so it's not operating as a city, um...
Okay.
And to get use of it so it doesn't just deteriorate, just jump, I mean, I just question if we need to action on that, or can we have an action on it? Do we need an action on it?
I don't think we need to. Yeah, I would think you would want to.
Probably should, yeah, probably. Well, I'll make, I'll make a motion that we donate the, what's that?
You can't.
I see that, it says discussion.
That's why I asked, we have discussions, so we're putting on next week's agenda till tomorrow they prove it.
But if they wanna start getting it down, go ahead.
Is it Tom DJ?
Is that who you had working for?
He was supposed to swing by and check it, and they get back to me, and then that didn't happen either.
Just go with that.
Yeah, just, just don't send the county the bill for fixing it.
No.
No. Yes, Tim, and, and, yeah, then you'll have to let me know if there's anything you want me to find or do, or, you know, it shouldn't be. Okay.
We'll, we'll, we'll put it till it's official next week, I don't think Janet needs to stop by on that.
No.
Well, we did...
Yeah.
Money worries are tough.
Yeah. Any other questions for Janet on the siren?
And you had to drive down here in the snow.
Yeah.
Is it bad, is it blizzard in North Town bad, or what?
My gosh, there's plenty of little neeces and, oh, there're great neeces and that's the, yeah, snowmen.
Oh, mercy.
We don't need snowmen in October.
They're fun when they're off, they get carrots. The worst thing is I go to the United States, do that, but...
Yeah.
Yeah, no, the work catches, no, 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 too.
Any other discussion?
All with.
Yep.
Okay.
Everybody asked, okay.
Move forward.
Yep, I think we're good. Thanks, Janet.
Any questions for Pioneer?
Thank you.
Are they, are they gonna pull the pole down then too, that it's on, or is it on a light pole, or what's it on?
I doubt if we take the pole, yeah, it's on a pole in the park across the thing.
Oh, just so it ain't close to the road, I don't have to worry about it.
I'll just...
Okay. All right.
Ivan's jump is closer to the road.
The pole is in, if not, if not, yeah.
Yeah, just bruised.
Well, uh, we, Max was expecting nine, right?
Max, are you there?
I'm, I'm on my way. He's gonna clean up a lot there. Don't wanna screw Max's schedule up until I give anything out at 1:00.
Yeah, we're right on schedule too, pretty good, so...
Didn't wanna get involved in something else and forget about Max.
Mm-hmm.
And maybe he'll call instead.
But we don't have him on Zoom at...
We're the only one there.
Time.
Only one, do you?
Yeah, if, I don't know if you need to contact and take it, or, but...
We'll contact him. Yeah, we'll get him.
Should we just move on down?
Yeah, let's just keep moving along.
There she is.
Max?
Okay.
Max?
Yeah, on my phone.
There you go.
All right. Good morning, Max.
Good morning, Peggy, I cannot speak to this Zoom meeting for some reason, I don't know if it's on my phone, but...
Okay.
I can just do this by phone too, so that's fine.
Okay.
Well, you're on, Max.
Okay, y'all hear me okay?
Yep.
Yeah, I believe so.
Can you hear him?
Well, you woke me to see my, my, uh, ugly mug every morning, and I was hoping we could do that, but...
We're looking forward to it.
You know, I haven't gotten any better looking over time, so it's, you know, nothing major.
We'll take your word for it.
Well, hopefully someday soon after this COVID craziness is finished up, we can actually start visiting our clients again, which is really annoying to us, but, um, Peggy had asked me if I could just give you guys an updated recommendation, things like that, security. So, um, I, I have a document, and I'll send that over to Peggy, she can share it with you, and then any of the documents or anything else that, uh, you guys may discuss or bring up, just let Peggy know, and I will send that information to you. But I'm just gonna give you a basic security overview of where we're at today, and if anyone has questions, stop me and, and ask. I'm gonna try not to speak technical, geek, geek, I will just try and speak, uh, things that I think we can all understand, but sometimes they're a little bit, um, technical measures, so if you get confused, don't worry about it, I'll send the document over to Peggy too. So, due in part to COVID-19 and the upcoming general election, uh, Solutions has been exploring Uh, Solutions has been exploring and implementing all kinds of different security measures, both for ourselves and for our managed services clients. You are one of our managed services clients. So the first thing, we've identified four major areas of concern, uh, that, that go the entire globe. Uh, all of our clients have these same concerns. You're not alone. You're, you're not different from everybody else. They're the concerns of all of our county, uh, across the state. And the first one is policies, policies and procedures. And the first recommendation that we make to our clients now today is find your policies regarding internet usage. Review them and update them. Those internal policies regarding IT, uh, should cover such things as password issues. Um, Peggy can attest to the fact that we just sent out a message from Chuck, which just sent one out also, on the IBM i and security there. We've got clients who've never changed their password on an IBM i or an AS or hundred, whatever you may call it, uh, for years. Sometimes decades. It's, it's an internal server. It's not outward facing. Uh, people can't get to it supposedly from the outside unless they hack your system some other way and they have access. Is there a lot of information on there that is private and should be secure? Not a lot. Most of it is public knowledge, but there are things on there such as K-roll information and, and, um, employee information maybe on there, so we, we wanna make sure that passwords get updated. But password issues on intel based systems such as PCs, laptops, tablets, phones, or any of the new type of devices that connect to your network should meet certain things. And that includes like speed. How long before is the lock at the end? You get it? If someone tries to attack your, your personal PC or laptop or whatever, um, there should be a lock on that. And then how long before that lock resets itself so that you can try and get in again? The lockout threshold, how many times should they be able to try, you know, your password? The maximum password age in days? And that's up for debate for a lot of people. Some people say it's once a year. Some people say it's every ninety days. Some people say it's every thirty days. Um, Microsoft themselves are changing their policies and have just implemented some new policies from what's called the NIST. The National Institute for Secure Technology or something like that. But it's the NIST policy, which is a fairly complex, minimum fifteen characters. Uh, can contain any calendar or any, any word in the dictionary or encyclopedia, um, numbers, characters, all kinds of different things. But then you should only have to change it once a year. We're still saying, let's talk about that. How often should we talk? Now, how often should we change it? And that's not your guys' decision on that. The minimum password length and then also the password that you're able to remember. So for instance, if I change my password every ninety days and my password is my grandkid's name and the year they were born with a period at the end, and at the end of ninety days I just change those around. Um, that probably doesn't work quite well. It, uh, they're gonna figure that out sooner or later. Um, the next issue on policies is how do we start training people? Um, when I get into the internet of things, an email, you're gonna find out some statistics here that hopefully will carry you a little bit and yet make you think about how do we do this? We've been working with three different companies to try and figure out the best for the easiest or the less cost. Um, different packages that are out there for training. And there's three that we work with called NO Before, Scout, S-A-O-U-T, and Defense Five. And each one of these different packages contain end user training. For an example, would be phishing emails. An email comes into your email box and it sure looks real, um, and it's got this attachment. And you were kind of expecting an attachment, but, uh, that just wouldn't look right. Do you click on it? Well, these three programs actually give us statistics about who did click on it. And then that was presented with a training scenario to say, hey, you clicked on a suspicious email. Um, here are some things that you should learn about this. But it actually qualifies, qualifies it, gives us an analytical report that we can send on to you guys. Say, you need to sit down more with Suzie if whatever office Suzie's in, or Bill, or whoever it may be. But those are additional packages and I don't really wanna get into those today. What I want to cover with your policies and these other items is things that we are doing for you that aren't costing you anything in addition to your, um, your managed services contract. Not a package you have to buy, but just things that we can do for you. So after policies comes the internet of things. Well, virtual private networks or VPN, uh, those requests have increased multiple due to the work at home issues stemming from COVID nineteen. Almost everyone there in your facility has to make the decision as a department head. Do I let Suzie or Bill go work from home because they have an existing situation there, um, at risk? They can do their job from home just as well as they can do it from here, we think. But we need them as an essential worker, so we're gonna give them a VPN or virtual private network. So we've assisted with that, but we, we continue to ask permission from the board of supervisors. And there's actually a form that comes out from us, um, that allows us to create a secure access for those staff members that you deem should be working from home. And when they come back, then we just need to know, is this person going to work from home again? Or we suspend that account so that it's not a hole in the network? And, and we try and keep up with that. Um, a working document was also created and sent out regarding the spacey of working from home on a computer owned by the county. And where there was no county laptop or system available, how do we do that on a home PC? So we sent out specific things when we were doing VPNs for people. It had to meet certain criteria. Had to have hand that virus on it from home. It had to have, uh, updates done by either the end user or us assisting them. Make sure that all security nodes were closed. Even though they were going to connect through a virtual private network, we still wanted to make sure that those home PCs were, um, as safe as possible. Now, in addition to the internet of things, the cybersecurity issues that have been brought forward from the OCIO, the Office of Defense Information Officer, or the Secretary of State's Office for the General Election Security. We've been assisting monitors statewide with these concerns. Um, they're using such things as FireEye, IDS, which is an intrusion detection system. Vulnerability scanning, and we're working in hand in hand with, uh, the OCIO office and the Secretary of State's office on a daily basis, um, on all of those issues. Um, now, CIS, uh, Criminal Information System, also offers a couple of things such as CrowdStrike Falcon. It's similar to FireEye from the OCIO and we now know that it can run alongside of FireEye because you do that with the OCIO office. But when CIS came along and said, well, we want them to put this on too. We, we tested that and made sure that it did work on both sides. And then, uh, CIS also offered an MCBR, which is a malicious domain blocking and reporting. That, uh, not a lot of people have done that yet, but I see that as being something in the future that, um, will probably be something that we want. Even though we also provided assistance with the dot self migration for websites. Any website out there that is going to display election information was required to have a dot self designation to it instead of a dot US or a dot org or whatever it may have been. We assisted people with that. That was in order to, so that they can kind of put some of these CNS, which is a domain name system for domain name service. Your domain name actually goes through their services to make sure that someone isn't trying to block you or make a denial of service attack against you or something like that. And then we've addressed every issue that comes from these security reports that we possibly could. In, except for something silly called an SNMP, which is a simple network mapping protocol. When we, when your, uh, printing people come in and put in a printer, there is something that the printer used, which is called simple network mapping protocol. And it usually does not hit a name, uh, for that printer, even though the printer has a name, but there is a, the mapping that goes on. It is not a big issue, but, and it's not an exploit that someone would usually go after. So that one we have kind of went, yeah, OCIO will help us. How you want us to do this? You want us to change all of the SNMP names so that you understand what they are? Or do you have any, you know, suggestions we can do to fix that? They have not come up with one for that yet either. And there is internally, my, is my understanding, is the state has an empty mapping. So it sits out there and it shows up on your reports, but no one is really concerned about it at this point from the state level or our level, and you should have to either. Um, the next one is email protection. Oh my God, this is, this is absolutely insane. Um, we use a company called Statista to actually give us, uh, information and analytics about, uh, how much email is really being used, targeted malicious attacks. And spam messages as of March twentieth to twenty twenty were fifty-three point nine five percent of all email traffic worldwide is a spam. That's one in two emails that is sent out are spam. So our biggest protection that we can tell you about today and every day from here on out is something called 2FA. That's multi-factor authentication. And that at a minimum is something that we are going to recommend to all of our clients. We have been putting it on our systems internally now for, and testing for about six, six or eight months. It's not a minor pain, um, but what it does is every time you wanna go and log into your email program just once, oh, you have to do it, but you have to do a different form of authentication besides your password. Um, and it's on your smartphone or it's an app on your computer. Or you could get an email. You could get an SMS text on your smartphone. There's many ways you can get it and then you just enter in either a four or a six digit code. Then they know it's actually you, um, and that, the cost of those things is about three and a half to four dollars per user per month. But we have not rolled that out to everyone yet because we're, we're now trying to figure out which one is the best for our clients. Whether it's the Microsoft based one or one that we've been using called Duo. Um, Duo is highly recommended. Microsoft is much more, um, cumbersome and it doesn't, it, it, it's just not as user friendly, so we wanted to make sure that we got something that's user friendly. They're both the same price, but we wanted to make sure that you've got things there. But that's a cost that we're gonna send you and say, here's what we recommend and here's the cost. Now it's up to you to do that. But before you ever get to that, what we have done is we have added five different things to your email system. Either we have done it already or you're being worked on as we speak. Um, we're doing it statewide to all of our email clients. One is audit logging. What did the client actually do when they logged on? Who logged on to their system? Where were they from? What did they actually do? Did they send and receive email? Did they, what did they do? That's audit logging. Um, and SFM record, um, which means what is it really you who logged on? Uh, there's something called a backscatter protection, which allows us to make sure that it's done from someplace in the United States. Uh, domain name key identified mail or CCHM, which verifies that you are a part of that domain. And then message authentication reporting in compliance called EMAR. We can actually put a little message right in your email that says this came from a suspected hacker or a suspicious email has been delivered to your email box. Please think twice about opening it. Um, we can stay up with anything we want to in those messages. Sometimes they're in yellow highlights or red letters or something like that. Make sure that our clients are seeing those. But those things we are actually covering underneath your managed services contract as a service to protect you without having to charge you for any packages such as the Duo. It's what we want you to do, but if we can get a bunch of these other security things in place ahead of time, um, it gives you a little bit of breathing space. And then finally, device management, me too, security updates from Microsoft, IBM, Adobe, uh, all of the other major software vendors that are out there. You currently have five servers, now counting the IBM i, so it'd be six for that. Uh, you have about, uh, forty-nine total devices there that we are monitoring or making sure get patched on a every two weeks or every four weeks, uh, basis. It depends upon whether it's just a security update that it needs to get done in two weeks. If it's just a general knowledge or a general, um, article that says, this is not really, you know, a, a security issue, but it is an update to our program. We do those at least on a monthly basis or, or try to, unless we identify something's wrong with it. And the method that we do that is, is first we do it to ourselves. We apply all updates, whether the security or just knowledge based articles, to our enterprise system and find out what fails, what doesn't work, what causes problems. You know, running vision programs or running Adobe or running Word or Office, whatever. We do that for ourselves first and we, and we test it for a week. Then we have beta sites that have agreed that they would be the first ones to get these. So if there is an error in one of those patches that comes out, they let us know right away. And then we can either roll it back for an entire office like treasurer's office or recorder's office. And we can roll it back for them and they go back to what they were so they can keep on working with whatever package they're working with from the state or some other vendor. Once we get that fixed, uh, then we send it out to the general public. So every two, every two weeks, we're constantly in a rotation of doing security updates. Looking at your actual computer system to get touched probably in the background, um, two to ten times a week and you don't even know what's happening. Um, we try to do that after hours. We're not doing anything during the business day that would affect how you're working. But, um, the security update patches, it used to be, you just clicked on something on your desktop, you know, and that, yeah, update my computer and you walked away for an hour and, and hopefully everything worked. And when it came back on, you went, okay, good, I got those. And then you see you got thirty-three more of them and you do it again. You do it again. We try and do all of these security patches or general knowledge based updates after hours. You guys are not there. That's why we always tell you, please leave your computer systems on. Um, one other thing on device management, um, our sales department actually tries to get reports from, um, the software that we use for that. And right now in warranty, almost all of your devices are in warranty. But we're probably working with four of your offices right now, um, due to something has expired underneath warranty. It may be an old PC. It may be a laptop. It may be a printer. It may be something that's off of warranty. So our sales crew also gets these reports also, not just our techs. But when they're, uh, when they're working up with your employees and staff there, they're constantly going, okay, we've got a Windows seven box. No one supports Windows seven anymore. We have to get rid of it. So our salespeople will go, this is not only under warranty, but now it's a security risk. So they try and let you, let you know about that and then we get those replaced as quickly as we can or off of the network. So that was a whole lot of stuff. There was twenty minutes of me just rambling on. Um, do you have any specific questions that I can hopefully answer?
Peggy?
Nope. I mean, it all makes perfect sense to me, but I'm not sure if the guys understand everything that you do for us that we don't see all the time.
Oh, yeah, it's crazy. Um, the other thing that I wanted to mention here- The other thing that I wanted to mention is we've been using the same basic platform for our managed services for, gosh, I think it's fifteen years. We are now just switching over to a newer program that does managed services. We weren't getting the reports that, we sent reports to you, but we just didn't like the way they started looking in the last year. And we can't get the company that we've been working with for fifteen years to make updates. But we have switched out and have been working on a new program that we're rolling out for all of our clients. You're already in it, you don't know it, you don't know the difference, but within the next quarter, you're going to see some different reports coming out. For Peggy specifically, when she's sitting down, and all of the department heads are trying to work on their budgets for the year, hopefully, these reports will be better for you, so that you can make better plans on, I have to replace this, this, and this for the next fiscal year. I can leave that one, or I can just do a warranty update on this one, and that'll keep me for another two years there. So these reports hopefully will be better for what you need support. They were great for us, but when it came time to do budget stuff for you guys, we had to fight with the company constantly to say, no, I know that's good for me, but it's not good for the end users. They need to have numbers, and the numbers that you're giving me aren't what they need to order from. They can't make a determination on how to do a budget on their technology stuff if these, if these numbers don't exist for them. So hopefully Peggy will see, some of the department heads will see these reports come out in the next quarter now, so. And in case you're wondering, that is Dato R M, it's the same company that does the backup software that runs on your system to do backups safely and securely. There's just a lot of things that we do in the background. But at any time, if any of you, you know, wanted deep dive and go, Max, I just don't get this, you know, or I don't understand why we have to do this, and we can target any specific questions you may have, such as that policy. I'm going to send Peggy a updated kind of generic policy that some of our other counties have been using, and then you guys can take a look at that and say, here are the policies that we can adopt. And then talk about it among these department heads, going, how is this going to affect us? And I would be glad to help those, those department heads, Peggy, if you have a department head meeting or anything like that, because they're the ones who are actually doing those things, you know, and having to deal with, oh, God, now I got to change my password, now I got to change this, now I got to change that, now I'm going to get Duo, now I'm going to get, oh, my God, every time I do something, I've got to do three other things in order to do my job. Yeah, it feels that way some days, but between the Secretary of State's office, the Governor's office, the O C I O, and every hacker on the planet, we're the guys between them and you. Sometimes we ask you to do really crazy things, but there's reasons for it, and I'd be glad to explain for those reasons. And it's hard for any of them to understand it until they can actually see it. And that's why I like doing sometimes either a Teams meeting or a Zoom meeting, and can actually show those end users. Here is how you're going to do it. With that screening package that we talked about from either Defense Department or NOB or, there is some intervention there that we could help you with. I would like to have a couple of people who would be really involved internal on security inside, such as your Kipper person, or anyone who may be interested in providing internal training. I think it's very difficult for us to run all over the states and talk to every single person, but if we can get a couple of department heads or someone who's interested in doing that, learn how to be those people who can be our eyes and hands there, and then we give them the reports and say, here we go. Here's who's, here's who's clicking on things they shouldn't be clicking on, that's not a bad thing, that is just we need to educate them. Our H R person got something from Greg the other day that was not from Greg, and immediately she sent the message going, I clicked on this, but I'm not sure what it is. It's asking me for my user ID and password, and I never give that to Greg. Why would I give that to Greg? So even internally, we have to do these trainings with people. And some counties are doing it monthly. I have one county in the state of Iowa that is now set for security. If you have free strikes on a phishing attack, it don't work for us any longer, because you're putting the whole county at risk. I think that's a little bit much. That's what they decided to do. I am glad I'm not the IT person there, because everybody's going to say, I'm not going to open up with no R. But, you know, they were just getting attacked something fierce. All the things that we put in place for you are because of things that have happened with other counties, and then when we actually did the mitigation to figure out whether it was with the Fed, or police department, or the O C I O, or who are M S I S A C now and things like that, they asked us for specific things. Do you have audit logging? Well, no, the client didn't pay for audit logging. Well, find a way for them to get free audit logging. Well, we did. At least ninety days worth of audit logging. So right now, you only get seven days free. Well, we found another way around that with Microsoft tools, that we can't go back to ninety days, and that doesn't cost you anything. It's just a huge file that we have to parse through, and we actually want to do it. But we just send it out to them now and say, here's your audit log, you parse through it. You know, I'm not billing the client for this, I provided the log for you, you parse through it, tell me what's wrong and what's right, and we'll fix it on our end. So our relationship with all of those other people has gotten sometimes very strained, but at the same time, has really strengthened, really strengthened our affiliation with the Secretary of State, the O C I O, and M S I S A C, and C J I S. All of our guys internally, even our dispatch, who may come in contact with this criminal justice information, have to go through training and certification every two years. And we just got done with that. All of our folks got C J I S trained and certified and passed the test for that. So if they would ever come across something in the criminal justice system when they're working with a client, we are covered as a preferred vendor for C J I S units. Other questions you may have?
Anybody else have any information?
If we do choose to go the power, I call them power users, you know, to train a couple of people within our department, when would that training be available? Would it be virtual or in person?
It would be virtual. It would be virtual, and more than likely, it's going to happen sometime. It's going to start happening after the election. We don't want to have any, anything new before the election.
Correct. Good. Okay.
Yep. So probably November, December, we should look at doing something like that.
Okay. I think it's a good idea to have somebody, you know, in-house that has that ability.
Yeah, yeah. Just to help. I mean, it's not be a policeman or a Nazi or anything like that. It's just, hey, here's, here's something that you did wrong, let's make sure that you don't do it wrong again. And they're mean, they're, those hackers are mean, they're vicious, and they really make you think that they're real, and they're not. They lie so good, so we all get caught with things like that. It's not an end user's mistake, it is because they clicked on it, but that's just, you know, we're trying to help clients, we're trying to help customers, and when we get something, what do we do? How do we, how do we know it's real? It's giving them those tools to know that something is real or is fake. That's, that's the best training we can do for our end users.
Yes.
Thank you, Max. Peggy, anything? You got what you need? Everybody else? Any questions? Well, I really think we all appreciate the update and the discussion, and I appreciate particularly if there's any particular questions that we know how to get over to you to ask them.
Absolutely. You know where we're at. I live, yeah, forty-five minutes away, so if there's a real big problem, I can go over there too. We appreciate the help and support, and thank you very much, Max. You bet. You guys have a safe week.
You too.
Thank you.
Thank you, Max.
Thank you.
See ya.
All right. Essence of time and agenda-wise, we possibly have reached grain each year. Who's going to grain?
I will second Dave's motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those.
We are in range.
Hey, while we're switching, Sandy may, I may have heard call on that phone because my chatroom meeting, I don't want to hear it on my phone when I'm walking out the door. Sandy, I have a meeting at ten o'clock I have to listen to. So do you want to call the officer, the auditor's office, and they can put it in here? All right.
I'll do that.
All right. Yep.
Which meeting do you have to go to?
It's the finance meeting for Edno, and we have the secretary, I guess.
Do the, do the run the meeting, huh? Were you gone that day, or you got appointed that, or what?
No, but this is the deal. I said I would do something because, you know, they're always looking at Rick Gaspens in a way in disagreement. I figured he was up for something, so I didn't vote for him, but he did vote for me, and he goes, well, how'd you know I did? I said, because there was seven, four, and nobody against. That means you voted for me. He's like, how'd you figure that out? Seven people voted, you voted for me. So needless to say, he wasn't on my favor. Sandy's going to call in on that phone, Trish.
I actually think she is right now, that push line one. Can I just pick up the receiver and push?
Yeah, just don't push, don't pick up the receiver, just push button.
Sandy?
Are you there, Sandy?
I'm here.
Okay, good. Well, we are, it's just like the secretary does. We are in drainage, and we're going to start with Drainage District number sixty-two and discussion possible action of the drainage wells, and coming to an agreement on the small ditch area that they jointly share. Not all Trish has got that put together, or we're just going to discuss it?
Um, I talked to Dan Weidmeyer Friday, and he said his recommendation was to go ahead with this and then have Eric Eady formalize the agreement and submit to us. So then it would list the legal for the parcels that are coming in. Well, they're not being annexed in, but they're involved in it.
So any future sales of this project, of these properties, it'll be recorded so that they know they're liable for any kind of future maintenance to this person of the ditch.
Eric Eady is the logical choice, because he's worked with the landowners on the small drainage well project. And like you said, Rick, they have to have that agreement between themselves, and then they, as a group, would have that agreement.
With the drainage district.
With the adjoining drainage district for that small ditch maintenance. So have you contacted Eric Eady yet?
No, I have not. Just wanted to make sure of them.
That sounds like a reasonable way to go.
So we need to form a motion to have her contact him or set it up so that it can be recorded?
Don't know if he's voting on anything right now. I'd say just proceed to the.
Well, as trustees of, is it Drainage District twenty-two, sixty-two, I think we have to approve that agreement.
Is this discussion possible action?
You know, be as we're the trustees of sixty-two, I think we have to accept.
Drawing up will be agreement?
Yep. I'll, I'll make the motion for eighty-sixty-two to accept the agreement with the A D drainage well closure project.
Okay. All right. Any proof of discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those? We'll do that. Okay, that'll work. Now, we have Drainage District number four, mile five tile, and we have some information and some discussion of what was going on there this past week or so, and Dave probably has that. We have one of the landowners in that district here, Chris Woodland, and we can have discussion of what's taken loose there.
Well, I had to put on the agenda, we got called, I got called, that they were trying to cross drainage lines, which they are, and they already have, it looks like to me. They're darn close to it. Here's the map of the two districts, and as you can see on this one, the Gaspens over here, property is all been patterned tile, the tiles are too shallow, the county tiles are too shallow to pick up or to drain this. So these, this eight-inch is not being used. They come over here, cross the drainage district into this drainage where Woodlands are, and they tied into that eighteen-inch tile. Then they proceeded to go a ten-inch all the way up the hill. Now, they've already patterned tiled this field on this drainage district here, and it drains into that eight-inch, or eighteen-inch. They took it to the top of the hill, it looks like they're about two-thirds, three-quarters across the hill, and we got them stopped, and they capped it. Another couple of hours, they could have been clear down here trying to drain that peak ground. And I think that we need to talk to him and get him back. He's, according to the stuff that I had, Mansky done the contracting, he done this patterned tile two years ago. He told Kevin at that time that he needed to request a variance to get over into the other drainage, if he was going to go that route. He's had two years to be, to get his permission to join this other district, join two, whatever it is. And I think we need to bring it back down on our side or the other side of the hill, because if he ties that on into that eight-inch, that's going to overflow, and that's going to flood that eighteen-inch tile that was put in there a couple of years ago, or a year ago. It was upgraded then. It went out of hold in both drainage districts. And it wouldn't take him a couple of hours from where he's at to be down there and tied into that. It wouldn't be Mansky, because Mansky knows better now that we caught him. But Kevin could call another drainage guy and say, hey, I want to hook them two tiles up, and we'd never know the difference in going there and hooking together. And then you've got crossed drainage lines, which is against the law. So I would say bringing it back down on the other side of the hill, cut it open and cap it there instead of going up on top of the hill and capping it.
I would argue, the only thing is, and the biggest issue obviously is crossing drainage districts without, well, you don't just get permission.
It was held in.
You get annexed.
Right. It was held two years ago, they annexed it in, and didn't.
That's right. And that bears discussion in whether that happens or not. But the only thing about, if, you see that map that Dave's got and Rick's got?
Let's see the drainage district line here compared to the.
If the ten-inch tile is capped where it's supposed to be, it's still within Drainage District number four.
That's, that's right. I don't, I think this is yes. Different a little bit, because I was on the hundred eighty, and I took pictures of where that tile, where the excavator was. You could just see the top of it. And, let me write one here.
Chris Wood, you've been intimately involved in this, Chris Woodland, and obviously, in the Indian District four, as you guys are.
Our concern is, we just don't want that water to come our way, because our system's not designed to handle that water. And then, and then that's just going to create a flooding issue on our property, and the people in Drainage District number four and down the line, they're going to have issues with it, you know, because it's just. You know, because it's, it's, and, and there is a main in that field that he has. Um, they, they talked, I talked with Eric about an eight, they, they mentioned a tile that goes north and flows west along the railroad tracks. And I'm not disputing that that tile flows west, but it never crosses into Drainage District number four. It stays at sixty-seven, because it goes under the road, uh, by the railroad tracks. And I have another tile, uh, main that, I don't know if you, I don't know which, um, here, I brought the, I, uh.
Tracy's got.
I have something that I've already built. Here. Um, I think this one shows the best. But, I have a, a, a main, I own this quarter section right here, the southeast quarter, section four. And this is the drainage district, or, excuse me, drainage ditch in section three that we had to clean out, the joint cleanout with us in my county. Well, there is a tile that comes, a main that comes off of that dredge ditch and goes through these properties, curves around, and goes through the east half of my quarter section there. Goes over to the fence line between, uh, myself and, uh, the Jerry Haveway's mother-in-law is right there. And then it comes back, continues down south through my, the east half of my property. Goes under the gravel road, and I, I think that would be a hundred and seventieth street, I'm not sure. It's the, it's the gravel road a mile north, the one I live on. And underneath and into this little triangle piece that's cut off by the railroad, where Rasmussen's tile comes up here on this side, in that piece. So, I'm assuming it drains into that, 'cause it wouldn't go through this hill. This hill's like thirty feet above grade, you know, and stuff. And that hill, this is basically a hill. That's what defines the drainage district line there. And that's what they were trying to go through there. That David, you probably have that picture of it.
There's a picture where they supposedly quit, it's on the backside, trying to look at it. Beg for forgiveness, with the excavator clearly sticking up there.
And our concern is just that, you know, we want it done right. We don't want the walk through. We mean, the two different drainage districts, either way, I'm gonna get, I mean, water's gonna come through one of my pieces of ground, but we want it to go the way it was designed, instead of.
Right.
The way they're handling it.
But you've already opened up that trench, and put that tile into the top of the hill.
Yeah, and I don't know where that ends. I mean, I know, they said they capped it, but I didn't see that. Did you see that being capped?
Hopefully, that's where they capped it, where that excavator's sitting.
And that looks like it's on the other side of the hill.
Right. And that was taken off the hundred eightieth street.
And that was.
The hill kinda runs.
Who's excavator is that? Is that Bill Mansky's?
Mansky's. Mansky.
Man, man.
Mansky.
Mansky. I went and talked to him, and he apologized. He says, "We know now, we're cutting it off." As he said Kevin knew two years ago, that he had to annex in if he wanted to do that. And he hired me to do it. I thought it was all okay, and I said, "Oh, you're crossing two lines. You can't, unless you annex in." So, he said, "I'll stop, I'll cap it off," and that's where he capped it, where he's at. But he was on a, looked to me like he's down on the downward slope going down.
I mean, technically, the only thing we could do is request them, they cap it at the drainage district line.
I think that's what we're asked to do. I mean, basically, you go to the line, and someone will either have to be out there when they do it.
Yeah, he has the right to go to.
He has the right.
Yeah, but we, we just don't want him to go over the hill and hook that whole thing up.
Exactly.
There's a wet spot back there that just doesn't drain, and I understand he wants to get it drained, and I don't aim for that, but we just don't want it to come that way.
He says it's peat ground back there?
I, I, I don't.
Yeah, good chance.
It's a wet spot my whole lifetime back there and stuff.
This is a, whatever it is.
This is a district, as you can see by.
Yeah, that's.
It's the peat ground.
That hill's a pretty big hill.
It's what's in that main that's on, on those two articles, right through peat ground. We have peat ground on the other side there and stuff.
Hey, Dave, I'm looking at it on the map that I have, so what drainage district should it be going into? Or do they wanna annex into, besides four?
Sixty-seven?
It's in sixty-seven.
Sixty, uh, your sixty-seven is where it should be, and they're wanting to bring it over into sixty-two.
Okay, but the, the.
That makes it four.
Four.
Okay, so specific drainage district, four?
Four.
Four, so I see. Up to the east of that, the way you're talking about, sixty ten, I don't know if that's how you say it. Okay, it's sixty-seven, okay?
Yeah.
And, and it's, it's hard to see, I mean, you can see it on a map, but when you're out there standing, I mean, he's been out there, he's like, I mean, there are many hills in Homer County, it's a pretty good hill.
Yeah, it's, it's pretty definite which way the water.
That's why I said it's drainage district, so. Well, I mean, they've got a copy of that tile, yep.
Well, I, I think we should send a letter to, uh, the landowner, telling him we want the, the line capped at the district boundary, drainage district boundary.
In one way, shape, or form, these ways.
True. And he's got a photo of it being capped with the GPS markings. That'd be good enough, wouldn't it?
Well, you, you'd rather have somebody there visually to see it too, is the thing. And, and we're neighbors. We all wanna get along.
Yeah, that's the bad thing. You live, or work for each other, but by the same token, it needs to be done.
Just done right.
Yeah, so.
Verification that it's capped on the side of the district four.
Yeah.
District that it's supposed to be in.
Right. And.
That can be done, right? Just send a letter out, and have them respond with the verification. Either have someone out there to see it, or.
Where do we want it to come from?
Bill.
An attorney?
I don't know if that's necessary.
Yeah, I don't think, do some verification, that fair term, verification of it, that it maintains its stopping point in the district that it's in.
Yeah.
So, do we request that they contact someone here, one of you, and show you?
I would say so.
That'd be fine. Have them contact Dave.
In my area.
Do you send it certified so they know they got it?
Yep.
Thank you.
Because essentially, the map is shown, and if you can, there again, we also need, uh, we'd need a GPS reference point for the, the district boundary.
That's what I say, the.
So that you can compare, you know, east to west, if you will. Uh, and as long as that cap is verified in District four, and it's verified as a cap, that's it.
Yeah.
And obviously, they cannot go across district lines. That was, uh, I don't know, somewhere along that, I think the landowners to the east should be notified that, that it's taking place as well. I mean, they're the ones that hired the contractors, so I think they're both share responsibility in this verification.
Well, that's where it should be sent, because the, the field is split in the middle between the two districts. So, it's all.
It's all the same landowner, isn't it?
Yeah, it's all Rasmussen.
Should I cop, copy Mansky also then?
Yes, that'd be bad.
Yep, yep.
Okay, I, I got a question. I'm still learning on all this drainage stuff. So, whose responsibility is, is it the responsibility of the, uh, tile, or to make sure that he's doing this correctly? You know, to making sure that he's not crossing lines that he knows he's close? Or is it the landowners to make sure?
I would get, you know, I don't know, I'm not, I'm not a hundred percent sure on this, but I would think it'd be the landowners' responsibility to, you know, 'cause he's hiring a guy, and, and he says, "You can do this. I got permission to do it." You know, he just did what he was told, hired to do.
Gotcha.
Yeah, it would be a landowner's responsibility to, uh, request annexation, in which we have verification on that, but that was never asked for.
And, you know, and whether Mansky asked if they had permission to do it, we don't know. Uh, it don't matter to us. Uh, we just, you know, you just can't cross district lines.
Right. I just didn't know whose responsibility to, you know.
Right.
Well, so, we get that sent, and verification on the end point of the tile that shows up those end.
Should be the end of the matter.
Should be.
Is that fair?
That's fair. I just want it done right.
Nope. We need somebody?
Uh, we'll, we'll keep an eye on it. I mean, uh, I'm sure my dad would, you know, like to know when they're gonna do this. So, we can kinda, we're all there, we can all make an agreement, we can all get along about it.
Yeah, there you go.
Appreciate it.
I think that's a fair.
Yep.
Bruce said.
That's a good idea.
Yep.
Um, if, if it, just, just a question that I have, as far as annexation would go, if there would be a, a request to annex this at some point, what's the procedure for that? Does it, does it, do you have to, I mean, like, all, all my experience has been like, when they clean out the drainage just, ditches out there where I live, where they had to, you had to have a hearing first? I mean, you'd have to go through that process, hearing, then go to the supervisors, and said.
You gotta petition.
Okay. Petition, you gotta petition.
Petition to annex in.
To be annexed.
And the district can say no.
Yeah.
And then, and the supervisors over, can overrule the district if they prefer to, being where the trustees.
Well, and that's, too, that was the main concern for us, was we just, they just put that new main in there, and everything's starting to work, and now it's gonna overload, you know, and we didn't want that to happen.
Yeah, that does take good procedure for that.
Yes.
And has to be followed.
Okay.
Thank Rick.
Sorry, Bruce.
And all the landowners, they sent letters with that, right, and everything if that would happen?
Yes.
But, yeah, you just don't come in and snap your fingers and get it done.
I just, I just, I just do that, so I just wanted to know.
Yeah, it's not just a little verbal thing. Oh, yeah, you can go ahead and do it.
Yeah, no, not, no, not.
There's a process you have to go through.
Yeah. That's a fair question, so that's, it does take that process. Is that fair for the District four, Chris?
Yep, okay, thank you. Yeah, yeah, that's, that's fair.
Okay.
And, and see, this is, this is, see, this here is the tile that I was talking about, that they said.
Well, he says they're not even using that eighteen inch.
But if it does go into this part here, the hill that defines it.
Chris, copy on the letter.
So, it's still in this.
We're going to ask, so it's something that you do.
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
What's that?
I was gonna send the letter to you also, for my dad. Or do you just want it to you, or how do you want that?
Well, uh, my dad would be the property owner there, but if you could just send me a copy too, so I can help keep track of it.
Keep track of it.
Right.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay. Good deal. Thanks, everybody, for getting to that point. Thanks, Chris.
Do we want a response with this letter within so long? So, it gets forgotten?
I think that would be.
Yeah, that they received it, and they know that it needs to be.
Corrected.
The two, and that they can get the certification better. It'd be nice if they could go out and all this could be done before the ground reeds.
I would just, you can put a couple weeks on it. I, I wasn't given that much time.
Thirty days.
Twenty days, yeah, thirty days is giving the ability to do this.
I think whenever we, we send out a letter, we need to have a conclusion date.
Yeah.
Once it gets forgotten.
Yeah.
It's, that's also getting kinda.
Supposing.
On the road there, how far back that property or the drainage district is. Have you got the geography on your machine? When you pull that up in there on your computer, can you measure that distance?
No, I can look on regular map, maybe.
Like an assessor site could do that, maybe.
To get that.
Well, and see, that's a general boundary area, though.
It is.
'Cause this kinda overlaps.
Could be off a little bit.
Right.
Be like no man land in the.
Yeah, there is.
I have to go to that meeting.
Good luck with that, Bruce. Good luck with that.
It'll be the last time I do it.
Well, that's, uh.
They're gonna switch today.
Oh, okay, see you later, Bruce.
Thank you, Bruce.
So.
That kinda no man land in there's on top of that hill, which to me like, we found a bad side of that hill.
Okay.
Well.
If we could, you know, the boundary's down here, that's what we need to come back to.
I'm not.
I mean, Bruce is, we can measure from where he tied in to here, to find out, make sure he's, he's in District four. On the district.
Now, actually, it probably has to write the tile right up to the edge of DD sixty-seven. Even if it's not in, if that, there's a little strip of land in there that isn't in any district, it's hoping to be tiled by anybody.
Very top of that ridge.
I mean, if there's a few feet in there that isn't in either drainage district.
What you say, you, you can't.
So, one of the.
Long you got in. In DD sixty-seven.
Okay, I don't know.
But are the, the other people, is it automatic, they can do whatever they want to with the private tile?
Pretty much, if it's not in a drainage district, yes.
Yeah.
So, if that's not in it.
But it's really associated to a main tile, do they, you know, the main tile, is that, I don't know how I'm wording this. That's when they have to get permission to do, to extend their tightly?
Law, Sandy, as long as they are in whatever drainage district, and stay rightfully within their drainage district, they are, that's why they're in there. They have the zone to tile into a drainage district tile, or to outlet into one of the drainage ditches, in their district.
Yeah.
They cannot cross boundaries, this is an example, into another, from one district to another, to get rid of their water.
And there is very, very little land in the county that isn't in a drainage district, but those areas do drain into drainage districts quite often.
Like, the.
Yeah.
But when it is their own final land, and it's, and they're in that drainage district, they can look into the main or.
Yes, as long as they in their own drainage district.
They have to stay in their boundary.
And they, do they request that, do they report when they tile?
We request that they do, but the tile. We request that they do, put it on file, but you can't force them to put.
Yeah, there's, there's no law that says you can force them.
Only drainage district tile is recorded by law.
Which is unfortunate. It'd be nice to have it for everybody else.
Well, uh, while we're in drainage, um, I just have, this is just a FYI. Looking at the ongoing project in DD eighteen, cleanout project is going well. Getting up to the northwest, so it's been a long process, but there, it's been a lot of sediment, a lot of things, it's been a slow process, but it's been a good process. So, uh, it happened coincidentally, checking that out with Petersons, and things are going there. That's my report there, uh, there's a private field crossing. It happens to be in that ditch that they're cleaning. Never got to it yet, but the landowner discussed, it's not the landowner, pardon, it's a tenant, the farm's for the, it's a farm managed farm. Anyway, a private crossing that was failing. And upon further inspection, it's, uh, two big corded, uh, metal culverts. And that looks like originally it was just one, back when, who knows? And at some point in time, they had decided to widen it with another. The newer section is fine, the older section is deteriorating. And this is what the tenant discovered this fall, it's starting to cave in over their driveway.
Yeah.
So, anyway, long story short, my discussion, and I just wanna make sure this was correct, 'cause we just went through this about less than two years ago, a private crossing. I said the district would remove anything that's considered an obstruction, which would be the old section of culvert.
Yeah.
And, but the replacing of the new section is the landowner's responsibility.
Yeah. You got there, right?
And that's what the tenant was told to, to, 'cause this is a, I say this is a managed farm, it's a, it's owned by a trust, and who, you know, but obviously, the tenant works with the land manager, and he said, "I will take that information and tell them what has to happen." And as long as we have it, this is right in the path of the cleanout, and the contractor's agreeable to take the old, old piece out.
So, that leaves, they will replace it though, right? With the new, the landowner?
They have to, because.
It's generally access to the land.
It, it is one of those things where ten or twelve acres of an eighty acre field is on the other side of the ditch.
It has to be twelve, expensive twelve acres.
But, I said, "You don't be, if I don't like that," I said, "I know you don't like it." But I said, "That is the way it is," and I said, "We have precedent that we just went through this in the past two years with two other private crossings," so is that, that.
Matt thinks it's, so we done it the last time.
And to help out, uh, I checked with the engineer company with McClures, and just to, you know, kind of free advice, well, all it was, was that the, as long as there's no issue, and there is not, with the size and the flow and everything, there's no engineering involved. And they actually were good enough to send, just for the sake of argument, the thickness of the galvanized, what you would look for when you ordered your pipe.
Oh, yeah.
So, obviously, you can go measure what's there, that's the size, and just to make sure.
They got something that's adequate to hold.
Make sure, he said, "I wanna make sure that this is done right." Said, "Absolutely."
And they, they did, did they determine if it's.
And they, they did, did they determine if it's not impeding the water or anything, correct?
It will be impeding the water, because the one pipe is falling apart.
But, but the elevation of it's good.
No, there's no issue, you know, the contractor's looked at it, and that's never been.
Mm-hmm.
You know, there's never been an issue with the pipe, the wrong direction, or size, or anything. It's just the fact that if this half of it, give or take, is not replaced, it's gonna become a major problem.
Mm-hmm.
But the, so I was just going by recent history, that that's considered, the removal is considered a drainage district cost.
Yeah.
Because it's considered like, why we're cleaning it, an obstruction. But the installation is considered a landowner cost for their private crossing.
Yeah.
So, that was just the update, but it's kind of, I tried to put a positive spin, I said, at least it's on the way in the same project.
Mm-hmm.
So, that was my one kinda extracurricular drainage thing for the past week. Okay, Eric, do you have anything, then?
I got.
And Bruce, go ahead.
I talked to Eric about this already.
Yep, please.
Um, P nineteen, we had a tile project, this, we started this a year ago, and I went and talked to Ben and stuff, and showed, we had it all designed, and we had a bid on it and everything. And at that time, it was gonna dig across the highway. Now, since then, we did the paperwork, but we didn't get it in yet, we took all this time to do it. Now, we gotta bore it. Therefore, it's requesting to have an engineer look at it. And that's thirty-five hundred bucks. If that's a partnership pay, or is that you, cause you're requesting for your own crossing, we don't need the engineer at all. All we're doing, we're.
You're asking for the full check from us, though, and that requires an engineer's evaluation.
That's right, I agree with that. But the engineering fee, we do not need it at all for our contract, so we're just putting a new main beside the old main. So it's all been engineered before, the replacement of tiles.
But you're.
So why, and we didn't have the engineer involved in it at all. Came to you guys, and now it's gotta be. I know that we're requesting, why we're requesting is, it's law, you gotta pay from fence row to fence row. If you go to Jim Hudson Senior, code zero seven.
If you go to the code, four sixty-eight, six hundred, it says that you've gotta follow all the steps. Hire the engineer that you're ballcapping about, and, and pay that fee. I mean, it's not free, the reason you're requesting is because you want like thirty thousand dollars from us to bore underneath the highway.
Right.
And, and we will, and we will pay for that if you follow the code, which requires an engineer's report.
Right.
So.
My question is, and I.
It looks like it's a pretty good trade, thirty-five hundred for thirty thousand.
Well, it's your, it's your cost anyway, because of the fence row, you're right.
No.
If it's a hundred thousand, it's yours. If it's two hundred, it's yours, this, you.
If, if you follow the code.
If you follow.
So, so just follow the code.
Right, and yeah, but why, we're wondering why, cause then all we cost is ten percent more on the tile, to the tile increase, and now we're getting hit for thirty-five hundred. So these landowners are asking, why are we getting stuck with this? Because it's not, it's not part of our project, it's your project, we go to a fence.
Because you're asking us to pick up the whole tab.
You're gonna pick up the whole tab anyway, cause it's law. It's law.
If you do those.
If you, if you follow the code and get an engineer, we will pick up the whole tab, correct?
If you follow.
But you have to follow the law also. So that's the deal, just follow the code.
Well, that's where we have a policy, where we offer the quick and dirty, fifty percent of the cost of the boring up to fifteen thousand dollars, and fifty percent of the cost of a gravel road crossing, that's two thousand dollars now. That's no questions asked, that's no hiring an engineer, that's basically drawing it on the back of a napkin, and having, uh, your own private contractor come in and do the crossing, that's a, we don't ask, we don't tell, we just.
I agree.
We just cut, we just cut the check, which is what you're asking us for, but you're wanting us to pay the whole tab, and to do that.
And we, and we will, if we follow, cause we have to follow the law, you have to follow the law.
If that's enforced, which is required by drainage code.
Yes, if that engineer says that's needed, we'll pay for it.
And it, and the, the reason in twenty years, nobody's gone through the four sixty-eight, six hundred that they're trying to go through, is because it's not free. You have to hire an engineer, you're gonna make that expense.
So my, so my next question is, who got stuck with the one going underneath the bragging highway for thirty-five hundred bucks? You guys paid all?
We paid the forty thousand dollars for the crossing.
Cause it was a, it was a drainage district, mean?
Yep, yep. That was basically, the code was followed.
Cause we followed the code, just like we're trying to follow the code of your project.
That was a main, this is individual private.
But still, very similar, the reason the county paid for the crossing was, that was a new project, engineer's report, obviously. Upsized project, bigger tile, code was followed, then it came to the county, and that crossing was paid for. Though it is almost, it's an apples to apples comparison.
Well, except that it was, for us, the secondary roads, that was put on us because of the engineer's report, like you said.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And it was a, uh, it was an individual estimate, we knew approximately how much it was gonna cost, and then when the bids came in, we knew exactly how much it was gonna cost.
Mm-hmm.
But my next question is, we, Dan tells, we're supposed to do this. I have talked to Eric about that. To bore underneath the road, we don't have no connections with people like that, but we can try to find them. I would think the county itself would have hooked up with some board, so you can have the contact with him, and you'd get a better bid from one person instead of, you know, he'd be one of, you'd still take three bids. But why won't the county line this stuff up? They're like, we can handle it, and you can go tell, do you know what now?
Well, an alternate, Ben, would know this better than anybody, how often is, would it, the secondary roads' responsibility? We bore underneath the road?
Why is it here?
I know that big project on the, like, uh, since then.
That's the only one that we've bored.
So, I mean, my, take.
Well, and we've only done one, and.
We, we approved, uh.
We done it before, now you made the law.
So, we did something similar to what Bruce is asking down by Pioneer, where that property owner didn't wanna go through all of the steps, and requested the fifty percent of the boring cost up to five thousand dollars. They've done the project, but they haven't finalized out, and they haven't sent us, basically, that, that they've paid their contractors for boring underneath the highway down on the county line southeast of, of Pioneer.
Oh.
Uh, the other request for boring was Harold Trask, when he checked on pricing, did it go up? So he did not end up boring under the highway.
So, the, my point of the story is, don't, county responsibility boring is not a every month occurrence.
No, we, I mean, we don't have contacts with, with these boring companies.
Any more than the average person wants to do it.
I talked to one company years ago, when Harold was looking at crossing the road, to try and find out how much we're actually talking to bore underneath.
So, is it fair to say, I mean, I'll ask if you have a list of certified boring contractors?
Get on the internet and look it up.
If you did, I would say, I know you share it with Bruce, but you, not you, but the county, even secondary roads, really have more better access and knowledge of boring contractors than the.
Our price is gonna be similar to what the property owners.
Yeah, I mean, I know what you're getting at, Bruce, and I wish that there was something more to that, because.
Probably technically, more, more than often, it'd probably be higher than what a private guy could get.
Well, I would assume whoever the filing contractor is gonna be, they would have a, a better contact with boring contractors than.
That's the plus.
Than the county would.
Yeah, cause they would deal with it more often.
You know, like, uh, a Mansky or, or Kalmer, in this case, would have someone that they have worked with in the past that they would just contact and say, need a quote to bore underneath the highway, roughly forty foot of it needs to be bored. I'll have a pothole dug for you on both sides, here's the elevation you need to shoot at, and shoot a price.
Like, the world would run into one who do this before it freezes, or during the winter, and now, you try to get somebody to bore it in the last minute, since you guys switched the digging to boring, because it's, it's put a whole team in. He's following one guy that might get on it, everybody else, Mark Kelmer, he's following one that might be late on that video. To answer your question of this. So, are you guys gonna set one bid?
Well, technically, we haven't seen any paperwork, Bruce.
I know, you know, what I'm saying is, he's working on it, Dan. Are you, and if you can't get any other than one bid, you're gonna set one bid. I don't want another delay, that's what I'm trying to say.
Ben, really, it's the biggest thing, there's been no engineer report that this is a needed project. Or I guess whatever the report shows that you need to get from the engineering.
Yeah, if you're wanting us to pay the whole bill, we need the engineering report.
Okay, this started a year ago on that, and I went in and talked to Ben, okay? And Ben says, to get us to go underneath the road, you gotta prove that it needs to be a bigger tile, okay? And we was gonna put eighteen instead of a ten, okay? So, an employee over there's walking by, and I'm in the name, and I said, hey, can you tell me, is there ever water set on that gravel road there? He says, we put up damn signs every spring for a month, because of the, the old water there. Well, then, I said, right there's your engineer, Ben. I said, so Ben said he would look into it. Ben did, a weak player said, he, okay, it takes an eighteen inch tile to drain that ground. Your own engineer, okay. Be three hundred fifty acres or three hundred five acres, he said, yes, it does take an eighteen inch tile. So our engineer, okay.
I'm not, I'm not discounting or discrediting the size that you're asking.
No, but you'll get paperwork.
But we need it, we need it, engineer, hire Ben to write up an engineer.
I don't think that came out of being a disinterested.
Oh, sorry.
I'm sorry, he's been interested, I don't wanna cut a check for pretty costs.
Yeah.
But Ben and the county have to follow Iowa code.
Yeah, we, we, all we have to do, we have to follow the code.
But paperwork, Ben also had a contract, or a verbal contract with Mark Kelmer, how much to put through the road? What, eighty-seven or something?
Uh, Mark thought it'd be like seventy-five, eight thousand dollars, something like that.
And that was all, so there's, there's paperwork, I mean, you.
There's no paperwork.
I know there's paperwork.
It was a conversation between the two of us, what are you talking about? How, how much is this gonna cost me? Roughly eight grand, okay, that's fine. Since then, we had a guy wipe out on a motorcycle.
I agree.
It increased our liability, we as.
County.
The county, I guess me, came to the board and said, how can we limit our liability? How can we limit our risk? Well, we can limit the number of times that we're gonna open, cut, or pave the road.
And I think that's great, going underneath it, cause you go back and batch, like we talked about.
Right.
We can get a batch, and three times we get a minimum.
But I don't understand, Bruce, you're telling me it's gonna cost you thirty-five hundred dollars for an engineering report?
I think Ranger just told those guys, really, they, cause he took the paperwork Ben sent out.
That, that's, that's way, that's the cheapest route for you to go.
It's ten percent of what you're asking.
Yeah, but it's not our cost at all, because the only.
Iowa code, it is your cost.
Well, it has nothing to do with our tile, cause you're the one that owns fence row to fence row.
I agree.
So this engineer's report is not just.
We don't need.
What's going underneath the roadway?
We have, that's, it is, because now he requested, so it is. It wasn't part of our tile project before. Our bid was eighty-some thousand, and that wasn't part of the bid, he was gonna put it all in, it was all agreed upon. So that's why I think, the four land, the four landlords are asking me, why are we getting stuck with this when it ain't part of our project?
Because you're asking for thirty thousand from the county.
It's your bill, we're asking for something that you should pay anyway. That's why.
We might.
I don't even know why, but.
Not, we might, we will, if we get the engineer.
It's, it's needed.
The problem, the, the simple thing is, Bruce, if we do it for you, then we gotta change, then we're breaking the law for everybody else afterwards. We gotta follow the law, that's our problem.
We'll go check a lot of counties today.
Go ahead.
This morning, and I was gonna do that, I had to go down and run mail, that's why I'm dressed like the other, apologize, that's why I'm here late. Cause I trucked everything, make it, but, uh, Jim Hudson told me way back when, I've dealt with him six different times, and he said, anything from fence row to fence row, the county tries to get out of it. Well, you just take it to court, cause they gotta pay a hundred percent, it's their responsibility, you both can have a break.
So you wanna take me to court for your ballcaping about a thirty-five hundred dollar engineer?
I just wanna get it corrected, if I have to say. If it's not necessary, in this area, it shouldn't be done, is what I'm trying to say. Why do we, you, you, you request an engineer report, but the tile is gonna put the tile in, that engineer ain't gonna put the tile in, so the engineer or tile can still screw up.
True.
So what, what's this a report really? I haven't figured it out. Mark Kelmer's gonna put the tile in.
This is Iowa code, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Then Bruce, what you need to do is, if you don't like the Iowa code, then you need to get a lawyer, and go through the Iowa code and try to get a change. And this is totally out of the county's hands, this Iowa code. So if you're the beef with this, take it off to the lawyer and try to get a change in the Iowa code.
Well, I, I gotta check it out, but I've heard different county towns are different, that's why I wanted to find out, is how the other county towns situation is.
Every county handles.
Well, if that is the case, then they're not following Iowa code.
Well, what I'm saying is, if it's a project that don't need necessarily, why are you guys requesting? I know it's Iowa code, but if you don't have to do it, who's gonna, who's gonna say anything else about this? If that's right here, is a thirty-five hundred dollar necessary?
Yeah, so, the, the protocol is, cause Rip just said too, and then, in fairness, then everyone that wants.
You know, and the guy who'll put in.
Is going to just assume that the county's gonna pay for it, the cost, they'll pay for the cost of the.
Yeah, I, I only need a six inch tile, but I want a four, or a fifteen, or eighteen put in.
Yep.
He located.
And that's what I think the engineer report, the engineer is gonna say, what is the tile size that is actually needed? You know, everybody can have a wish list, but if that isn't what is actually needed, then there's no sense putting in the.
It won't make no difference if I located, he located or anything, you did not hire him to give you the okay.
And you can't, because he's very.
I am not a.
I mean, he, he could say, yeah, it's probably a benefit, but we still gotta follow the code.
That's kind of, he didn't say that, okay? Cause I said, you're the engineer, why are we paying? So then he said, I'll get back to you in a week, and he said, yeah, I looked into it, three hundred and five, ten acres, it takes an eighteen inch tile to do it. And all I was told.
And I'm not disputing.
He decides.
Right. So you're, you're the engineer, the commissioner, county guy, okayed the tile here, so he, you're agreeing that it needs to be a big tile, so why are we getting a thirty-five hundred dollar involved in it? To me, that's playing blue sky.
And he was just giving you.
He was just giving you advice.
He's not a disinterested engineer, he has to, you have to hire a disinterested engineer.
And we have to have a written report, so we can file it, and all that stuff.
Basically, that way we get something for our money.
I mean, I wish we could help you out, but our hands are tied by the Iowa code. We have to follow it, you have to follow it, he has to follow it, and that's why it's altered, it was written a hundred and five years ago, for a reason.
So my question was, you gonna accept one bid, to get one bid then?
Yeah, we'll have to accept one bid if that's all we get.
Yep, okay.
Cause we can't force people onto bidding it.
But we don't want delay anymore.
Yeah.
We still haven't seen any of the paperwork. You gotta have paperwork, I mean, we can't approve anything without paperwork. And it's not like you come in and you drop the paperwork off, and boom, the hearing's the next week. It's probably a month out, I.
And it's the lawyers, too, it's Brett Leggels throwing it all out.
Well, but I mean, yeah, you and I, we've been, we've been talking about this for years.
Yes, we have, and we, I was trying, but Brett said, he was like, hey.
And we, we've been having the same conversations since the spring, you gotta follow the code.
Feet now.
Nope.
If this has been going for a year.
I mean, if you were.
But I was trying to figure the thirty-five hundred bucks out, that's what all the, all the landlords, is why are the thirty-five hundred dollars involved? And why are we stuck with the thirty-five hundred?
I'm not mistaken, they have to, I mean, the engineer basically draws everything up, shows the elevations, I mean, the, the similar things that you and Kalmer have worked out on a piece of paper, the engineer basically drafts a formal documentation. This is the route that it's gonna run, this is what was previously.
Yeah, this is the depth, this is the sizes.
Engineering report.
I agree, Ranger's got it, I mean, he's working on it, like you're saying. So we're willing.
We don't have, that's what we're saying, we don't have no paperwork, we can't do nothing.
Right, but we was wondering why the thirty-five hundred, it was a wasted cost, and that's what, we thought you guys, the supervisors, should check into, because it benefits nobody.
It's a necessary expense.
It don't benefit you guys, and it don't benefit us.
Well, it does benefit us. The engineer's report does.
I think the last time you came in, Bruce, you told you had to have an engineer's report, but nothing's changed, from what we've said previously. I think the last time you came in, Bruce, we told you you had to have an engineer to court, but nothing's changed from what we've said previously.
Well, we asked to dance, 'cause we're bored, not instead of digging across the road. And that made from eighty-five hundred to maybe thirty to forty thousand, so there's big changes, yes.
Yeah.
And we got, Mark Kelmer thought we should be grandfathered in, 'cause we already brought it to the board, since she mentioned it.
You haven't brought anything to the board.
She just mentioned it, so.
No, but you came that time. I'm just saying that we've talked about different things with this. So, the thing going on for a long time is, you're changing it right now, that, it still has to have the engineering report.
Correct, I agree with you. So, we was wondering, it's dollar amount, the dollar amount's a big deal and the boring deal. That's why the landlord's got concerned, and I'm just.
And if you go through the proper procedures, it won't cost them a dime, 'cause the county will pay it all.
They'll pay the thirty-five hundred.
Yeah, they'll pay.
All the engineers.
But they have to have the thirty-five hundred to dig through the road even.
Yeah.
You have to spend, you have to have an engineering report to dig through the road. So, it don't make any difference. You still gotta have that engineering report.
If you want to pull costs.
You have to pull costs, you, so you don't.
If you wanted to cut across the road and you wanted the two thousand dollars or the fifteen thousand dollars, uh, it, it'd be done, no questions asked.
Right. But there, that's another question with all landlords, why is that code different? If you can dig through it and not get paid, and if you gotta get paid, you gotta have the engineer report, you, you still can dig through the road.
We create, we created a county policy. It's not code. We created the county policy that said, in, in an effort to help the farmers out and eliminate having to spend extra money and hire the engineers and go through the process of a hearing and sending letters out and taking the board's time during a board meeting, the county will extend an olive branch and offer two thousand dollars, well, before.
It was fifteen hundred.
Fifteen hundred and half the cost of a boring to five thousand. We increased those amounts because the cost to cross roads has increased.
Yep.
I mean, that's, that's not code. That's just our policy that we, that we have in place.
So, I've heard other, other counties got policy that.
Yeah, they're all, they're all different.
Every county is different. Western County is still five thousand dollars. Hamilton County is in the process of writing, rewriting theirs. Wright County doesn't have anything.
I think the sooth is fifty percent.
The sooth is, is seventy percent.
Seventy percent.
Seventy percent of, of the boring instead of fifty. Um, I don't know what Jack does in Pocahontas County.
All right, thank you.
All right, Bruce.
Anything else for Chris?
I just wanna let you know that I'm still working on sub seven, sub two mailing and getting it out to all landlords in the entire district. I'm working my call in on it, so.
Okay.
All right. Any drainage, motion to go out of drainage?
I'll, I'll second.
Any discussion, all of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, we are out of drainage. I'm gonna take a quick look at this, I got a couple copies, but this is the.
It's the weed commissioner.
Wait till we get back in session, and I'll just tell you a couple of quick things. Again, stated by code, that's all we do with this. Weed, while you've heard this before, if this is, if there's any location with any amount of this wild parsnip stuff, the best control measure is early spring. So, you really can't see it or much of anything else, but it, it's very effective if you spray it.
Before you see it.
Broadcast.
Now, does that kill broadleafs?
Yes. So, that's where it's very effective. The thing you have to realize is why you kinda wanna target that. Well, you could target virtually anything. It wouldn't have to just be with that miserable stuff. And that miserable stuff requires an early application. But the nice thing, like Rick said, that it essentially is controlling all of the weeds, but it's broadcast. Whereas a program is typically, if you will, spot spraying. Covering the miles, but spraying where needed. This is a program where you start here, and if you go two miles, it's solid, two miles is spraying. But it's very effective, but you really kinda wanna target it. So, that's, we're gonna do a little bit more of that this coming spring. We'll still be in this fiscal year, 'cause we still have money left. Not that I'm trying to spend all the money, but, so if you, even a place that is kind of a known area, 'cause what we're actually kinda looking for is, you know, where you're, thank you, Dave. Where you're doing, um, in a farmer's field where they wanna strip, check, you know, as much aside pay, they do some strips. Well, we're kinda trying, and we've got a couple locations to do that, but, and if there's any couple more, we just target those, and it can be a secondary hard surface wherever to, you know.
Fit here.
Yeah, early, and like Rick said, it does control all the other things, thistles included, with the service site. So, that's the next, in the next year's thought process. So, anyway, we're needing to accept and place on file a weed commissioner's report, which I have two copies of, will, are required to, uh, send that off to the state. Along with, and this is just the formality, stating that I am still the current weed commissioner. And that's just a one-page, you know, to send along with it. They like to keep that on file with the state. Uh, this, so there'll be a copy here, if you ever wanna look at it. I'll just let you know what's in the report. It's basically, uh, noxious weeds, uh, how prevalent they are in the county, um, you know, what we do for roadside spraying, the cost, which thus far this fiscal year, we have incurred thirty thousand and six dollars towards right-of-way weed control spraying at an average cost of about sixty-three dollars a mile. Uh, we've spent a little over sixty-four hundred dollars in chemicals included in that cost. I had to give two private verbal notices for noxious weed control this past year. They were followed up on, so that took care of that. They will be obviously looked at again next year to see how the control measures turned out. Uh, and I'm just explaining, um, I believe we have improved our weed control in our right-of-ways with our programs that we've implemented this year. We targeted all of the hard surface roads in the whole county. Now, when I say that, is I'm explaining that it isn't a broadcast from one mile to the next. It's, they're all driven, and the noxious weeds, including, which is more of an obnoxious weed, which is giant ragweed, are treated where found. Thistles is a primary noxious weed in our, in not anybody's right-of-place. So, and then, the north half of the county, same program on the secondary roads as a fall application. All those miles were driven in the north half of the county, thistles controlled as needed. So, uh, we will, moving along into next fiscal year, it will end up being in the fiscal year, I'm sure, for twenty-one, we will certainly target all of the southern half of the county. Every mile of the secondary roads will be driven, uh, sprayed where needed. Um, probably, uh, 'cause it seemed to be pretty cost-effective on the lesser number of hard surface roads and secondary, and the fact that they hadn't been, I don't know, we were missing a lot of giant ragweeds. We may hit all hard surface roads again next year with that same program, 'cause it was fairly cost-effective. And I try to state this from time to time throughout the year. We can, if notified, control whatever, wherever, within the growing season, so to speak. If there's a flush of something, if people will bring it to my attention. And the other thing is, moving forward for early control of primarily wild parsnip, but this also does control the other, um, broadleaf noxious type weeds. If we have a known location and we broadcast spray from point A to point B, however long or many miles that is, we need to do that early in the spring, you're not really gonna see any weeds, but it is highly effective for the seasonal control of, of all of those particular weeds. So, if anyone has any ideas on that, we do have a fair amount of money left in the budgeted sum uh, that we will, would still be this fiscal year till the end of June. We'll use a little bit of that for sure, and we certainly have enough there to work with for some more, uh, script trials, if you will, early application. Any questions on weed control?
Nope, I'll make a motion to accept and place on file the weed commissioner's report.
One second.
Any further discussion? All of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close? We will get that on file and send off to the state. Thank you, everybody. Okay, uh, we need to accept and place on file the Veterans Affairs Quarterly Report, 'cause this quarter ended September thirtieth.
Still under budget. Everything looks good, the show's draft on the last page, but showing the, uh, wherever you add on budget and stuff, so.
Yeah, I mean, it's kind of been running that way all year.
It's been running pretty good right now. Hopefully, it's not going wicked, we don't have.
Yeah, getting into more expenses.
Knock the heck out of it. I'll make a motion to place on file the Veterans Quarterly Report.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close? Passes. Uh, committee reports.
Okay, Wednesday I had a LEC meeting at nine o'clock in the morning. We talked about, uh, budget amendment. Uh, and then, in the evening, I think at six-thirty, there was a dog shelter meeting on that same day. And that there, we're just kinda talking about, um, their grand opening stuff and little odds and ends that still need to be done in there.
Is it close?
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's really close.
What is the grand opening?
I think we're looking at November seventh.
That's what.
That's all I got.
Sandy?
Okay, on Tuesday the thirteenth, I had a conference call with our new CEO for CSS and our quadrant leader. We're trying to figure out, um, uh, oh, it was, uh, Pocahontas also, Quadrant Buster. Um, just trying to figure out what, what our mission was and what we need to do and that. And we also met on, or did a conference call on the fifteenth with the same people. So, um, this, CSS is still our best avenue for mental health. They have, um, the best, um, providers, services, um, the best bank, the best bank. I mean, I hate to put it that way, because I wanna make sure people are taken care of, but they really do. For the services that we need and that are provided, they still are the, are the best. Again, the key is they're affordable. And, um, we'll, we'll know this Thursday whether or not the ICS has accepted them, which I'm, we're all sure they are. We, uh, they'll be, they'll be expected. We're just hoping then, um, they, they as a county, better supervisors, will, um, agree to stay with the SFS instead of leaving. Um, because they are the border, they're the bridge, if you wanna call it, best be able to stay in that region. Um, so, we've just been doing a lot of calling, a lot of talking to people, trying to get them to, um, understand what that's saying and hopefully look at the bigger picture. Um, so that takes a lot of, takes a lot of talking. Um, and then, Wednesday the fourteenth, I was on a national COVID-nineteen group meeting. Um, it was again with, um, Deborah Brooks and, um, the, uh, oh, I did lost my place, sorry. Um, Susan General and a couple of other people. But yeah, the quicker time to do is, again, the importance of, they call it the three dutts, and wash your hands, watch your, watch your distance, and wear your mask. That's really the clean thing. And the other thing that they brought up was flu shots this year. Flu shots are always important every year, but this year it is extremely important that everybody gets their flu shots just because of this. You know, you get, you get flu, and you get COVID, that would be, um, very bad, um, as far as recovery and things like that. They're big, um, uh, they would like everybody gets their shots by Halloween. So, they're very marketing, saying, "Stay flu, there's a flu," so that everybody gets their shots before Halloween. Um, so, they did recommend and talking to the public health for what the recommendations were. Like they called Julie, um, for that and talked to her. And she said the recommendation is six months or over, um, to get, um, the vaccinations. And she said they make sure to call your provider, um, you know, to know what your insurance coverage is and availability. And, um, you could also call public health to, um, as far as, you know, getting your flu shots off. Like, if you're unmedicated and you're under eighteen, it's free. Um, excuse me, can you, can you see if there's anything? Oh, the other thing they brought up is make sure that the holiday is coming up. Make sure that you have your, your holiday plans figured out. Um, they're really worried about, um, people coming in from all over for these big holiday get-togethers. Um, and that somebody that could be asymptomatic could be a carrier and then infect the whole, um, you know, gathering. And if there's elderly people, you really need to be thinking about your mature population to keep them safe. And this.
Okay. Okay, uh, Sunday afternoon and Tuesday morning, I was chasing that drainage around. Wednesday we had an animal, uh, leaving after the new shelter. And, uh, there's gonna be kids, I think it was.
Yeah, I think it was.
It's gonna be at airway, home guards, and Hy-Vee on the seventh. And we're gonna have.
In the mornings, exactly.
House on the seventh, which would be on a Saturday from nine to one. And, uh, anybody that wants to donate, they've got a list of stuff needed. Anybody that wants to donate, they can drop it off at that time, and there will be an open house at that time. Excellent. That's all I had.
Thanks, Dave. Uh, I, officially, I just had the LEC more, LEC meeting that morning on Wednesday the fourteenth. So, um, but I got a couple of quick things. Very quick, very quick. First of all, me, uh, John, Davey, county attorney, did send the requested letter agreeing to the tax abatement on the parcels and that discussion from last week. We all got a copy of that, which was requested, so we did follow through. Um, so that was last week's discussion. Another thing, I'm sure you, I don't know if you all have a copy of this, but you can sure look at it, that, uh, we're getting a request from the sheriff's to resign as a communications officer. I don't know if that he can.
Uh, yeah, I was gonna say, I don't think he can, but. Let me just, let me just send that.
It's on the nine-one-one board all the time.
Is that nine-one-one, or is that communications officer? We have one.
Well, he's got it addressed to whichever one I laid on here.
So, it's the Humboldt County Public Safety Commission.
There you go, he's addressing.
Yeah, it's not the board of supervisors.
Okay. What is it, what is it reminding as communications officer?
Yeah, it says, yes.
The LEC board appoints the communications officer.
Well, that's.
At our annual meeting we always do. So, that should probably be on our next agenda.
Yeah, I see, this letter came when, October sixth.
Yep.
I had a conversation with him just last week, so it would've been after that. And I discussed about my thoughts of him staying on here, and I think he, we might be able.
So, that would be LEC then.
Yes.
Okay. I have two other boards that are not boards of supervisors, similar concern. But that would be LEC then, then you, agenda, I hear, okay? All right. But that's given, we'll, we'll go with that. We'll go with that. Um, so we got the letters on that. We got that taken care of. Anything else about anything else?
Maggie, do you have anything?
No.
Nothing? Good.
I'll second.
All of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye.